Yeah, I've got 1:30, so calling a meeting to order. And we've got a lot of business today, so. Five of us are here in person and Ron is in Florida, so we have six members. Thomas is absent. That's their tennis report and we're gonna move on to student reports.
Alright, so I'm excited to be here in the middle of the day today. The reason we are here in February, and by the way, thank you for giving up your Valentine's Day celebrations. We'll get you back, I promise. But we are here because our, usually in December, we have a student report. And in December, we were rained out, weather was bad. We snowed, we're snowed out, and now today it's raining, so I don't know, maybe it's just something about the midday meeting. So I'm gonna start off by inviting our elementary students. And I'll invite Mrs. Akerson to come on up and invite, tell us who she's got with us today. So, thanks for joining us.
Can you click on our slide?
Oh, I absolutely can. Okay, let me hold on a sec here.
Where are you gonna put it on this one too?
Look at that.
Well, thank you so much for having us here. I'm Cassie Akerson-Painesville, the proud Painesville Elementary Principal. And with me today, we have six students, third, fourth, and fifth graders, who have willingly, like Superintendent Bullard said, missed out on some afternoon celebrations of friendships and Valentines. And one of them even said, "Why would I miss this once in a lifetime opportunity?" So they are honored to be here today alongside me presenting the things that are happening at Painesville Elementary School. So with that, I would like to introduce to you our six guest presenters. So from third grade, if you wanna step forward and wave, we have Emery Golds, Mitchell Pocker, we have Nora Ellipsen, stand on this side, fourth grader Evan Johnson in fourth grade, and fifth grade Megan Weiner and Elena Akerson. So they are joining us today, and as you present, feel free to, if you wanna come on this side, it might be a better angle, but you do what works best. So they are presenting, co-presenting with me today.
Oh! Just a moment, please.
Remind me later.
Remind me later, thank you.
Alright.
Um, so barkouts at our school is, um, so they're great, they're little green slips. And, um, if you do a good deed, you'll get one. And, uh, so. You, kids have, you're supposed to try and get it so you can get, um, if you're, they draw every week to, um, for people. And if you get it, you get a prize. But you also, for the whole entire school, work on a, um, uh, celebration. And we got that celebration just a little bit ago, so we get to be at the pack for a little bit.
And the three things that we're working on, those good deeds, are what? Do you wanna tell us about those three? Being.
Mindful, respectful, and connect.
Nice job, thank you.
For math in third grade, we're doing fractions, like to compare numbers, equivalent fractions, how to use a number line. And. And we're also doing math facts, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. And in social studies, we're learning how to read maps, how to use maps. And we're making our little own maps at school too for social studies.
In reading and writing, we're working on AR goals. And AR is like a little reading program. And every time you read a book, you test on it, you get a certain amount of points. And then before you test on the book, you set a goal so that you have to reach that before the end of the quarter, and a quarter is nine weeks. And I love to read with competition. It's a friendly competition between three third grade classes. And you have to try and raise the top of ice cream mountain. And if you finish, first you get three toppings, if you finish second, you get two. If you finish third, you get one. But you have to get 300 points as a class to be able to get any ice cream. And if the teachers think you did an extremely good amount of reading, you get unlimited toppings. And then Learning for Rose, it's like an organization. And you get assigned a person, and then you write like a letter or draw a picture to make that person happy. And then Wax Museum, we got to pick a famous person, and then we had to like dress up as them. And then somebody would step on a button, we'd like come to life. And then for December music program, we had a music program called Home Through Holidays. And and in science, we learn about simple machines. And simple machines, they work easier and have few or no moving parts. And then some of them are the lever, wheel, and axle, screw, incline plane, pulley, and lift.
And then PE, we go to our ring here in Painesville. And we, third, yeah, I think third, fourth, and fifth graders went ice skating. It's just an opportunity to learn how to skate.
And then this is a picture of Mr. Hess's class after, like during homecoming. And then this is somebody dressed up like Black Disney for the Wax Museum.
Here are two pictures from ice skating. And this is from family groups, a family group. Um, it's where kids from each grade, some family groups have two from one grade. And they just come together to get to know each other better.
Thank you, third graders, we'll call on our fourth graders. You might wanna maybe stand where I was standing, I think that might be a good angle.
For math, we are, for math, we are learning adding, adding, um, we're, we're doing, we're adding frac, we're adding fractions and subtracting fractions. Um, basically, if you say we have, um, three fourths, and then we minus it by one fourth, then we have two fourths. And then we're also doing equivalent fractions, so if you, if you have two fourths, then that could also be equal to a half. And then in for geometry, we're doing shapes and angles for geometry. And then for science, we are doing weathering, erosion, and deposition. Weathering is if you take like sand and wind, and it rubs against the rocks, it slowly grinds it away. And then it'll blow and blow with the, um, blow with it and that on and on. Erosion is the sediment, is the sediment from the rock, or whatever it moved, is moving it. And then the deposition is it when it's in its spot. Um, for STEAM, we basically get to go and do some, uh, we get, we have a portfolio we're working on. And we get to basically work on that. And as we finish all the, um, everything in our portfolio, we get, we get to do our own project. And then.
Okay, so for reading and writing, um, uh, AR, um, like she talked about, it's a site on your computer where you go and you read a book and you test on that. Um, and you try and meet your AR goal, which let's just say is 15. So you're trying to meet that by the end of the quarter. Um, uh, so, um, for Black History Month, it's, um, citizens who were African-American and were treated unfairly and who changed the world. Creative writing is, um, so you go on your computer and you write a story. Um, and once you write that story, um, about anything, usually about the holiday that's going on, you share it to your teacher. And if you edit it right, she'll, she'll let you go up in front of the class and, um, and read it to the class. Um, and for social studies, where we are studying the USA regions. So, um, uh, let's just say the South region. You have to memorize those and you take a quiz. And once you've gotten all those regions, once you've taken tests on all those regions, you take a test on the whole United States of America. Um. Next slide.
Next slide.
Um, so this picture is at STEAM, um, for, that's our project portfolio. And, um, that's straws and connectors. That's one of the things that you, you get assigned on your project portfolio. So these girls here, they did that. And if you get that done, then you take a picture of it and you put it on that, your project portfolio. Um, so then they have that assignment done, and they move on to the next one. Um, this one right here was more of creative writing. So you can write the story like with more than one person, not. So, um, they were writing a story about football. Um, but that was, um, they did a really good job on that one, that's why I know.
And then, um, this, we had Stern's Electric come in and they, and they taught us about how to be safe around electric, um, around electric. And if, say, um, a pole, a line would ever fall on a bus, how we would walk to get out, um, off from there safely. And then, in, in this picture, we got, um, three, we made fire posters. We got to basically make something on fire or a fire in it. And then we got to write about what was on there. And then, um, and firemen wanted to go check, and then these three girls got, um, got picked, and they got a picture with the fireman.
Thank you, fourth graders. Up next, we'll hear from our fifth graders.
Fifth grade happening.
In fifth grade, we are learning about a lot of amazing things.
Here are a few examples.
Math. In math, we are learning about dividing decimals. There are a lot of steps that it's really fun to learn about. In power math, we are learning how to go from fractions to decimals and percentages. We are also learning mean, median, and mode. We are learning these things so we can compete in Math Masters. Math Masters is a group competition against other schools where they give you a whole bunch of hard math problems. And your group has to finish first to also be correct.
Reading and writing. In reading, we are learning about adverbs and we, and we are reading a story called laugh. We are also doing something called leveled readers, where you have a leveled partner. You are giving, you are given a small assigned book to read and take an AR test on it. This month, we are doing I Love to Read Month. And fifth grade is having a contest to see which class can read the most words this month.
Social studies. We have social studies in the first and fourth quarter. In the first quarter, we learned about early explorers such as Monta Musa, Christopher Columbus, and Marco Polo, and others.
Science. In science, we are doing a Mars project where we give, we are given a cinch bag with supplies for experiments to do every day. We have vocabulary birds for science and sometimes watch videos to help us understand science concepts.
Dare. In dare, we are learning how to stay drug and alcohol free. We learn how to avoid bad situations. Recorders. We learn how to play recorders in music. We learn the song Jingle and continue to learn more notes.
Ice skating. This month, the third through fifth grade went ice skating at the Painesville Hockey Area. We got to ice skating four times. Some kids played hockey on one side of the ring, and the other kids who didn't wanna play stayed on the other side. It was a lot of fun.
STEAM. We are working on our project portfolios. Mr. Boarderding gives us an assignment and we can choose which one to do. Once we finish, we can move on to the next one. Then we get to make our own personal project. In STEAM, we get to use different tools.
SCL. SCL is learning about life and how to accomplish goals. We learn about having good attitudes and how a good attitude can affect you. SCL lessons help us to be the best version of ourselves.
Here is in science where we learned how to prevent flooding. Here is homecoming. Um, indoor recess.
This is in science, we made elements out of toothpicks and marshmallows. This is very family group, and this is inside recess.
Thank you, fifth grade. Not to forget about the kindergarten learners, first graders, and second graders.
Kindergarten was having a fall tree over here over there. And the second grade has gotta go to space farm to do a little sledding.
Um, um, up here, this is homecoming and the preschool room, um.
And this is, uh, this is, um, first grade on their computers, working on their computers.
This is also the first graders and their program, um, bunny's program. And they just did the, um, program today.
I'd like to invite our student representatives back up to the front and just provide opportunity for any questions or comments from the board. Um, before they ask questions and comments, I just want to say thank you for presenting to the board and to our community the things that are happening at Painesville Area Elementary School. With that, we'll open it up to the school board for questions and comments.
I'd like to thank them for a great presentation. All of you were very clear as to what you were telling us about. And you gave us a lot of information that we don't see because we're adults. That goes on in the school all day long. Thank you.
So how, how long did it take you, uh, to prepare for this?
Two days.
Two days, so that's.
Yesterday and today.
Okay, very good, yep, you did fantastic job.
It looks like you've got a lot going on in your STEAM classes, a lot of hands-on things. Does that make school more fun?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like you're all happy, happy kids, and I love that. But I loved your presentation, thank you.
Alright. Okay, thank you so much for being here, I'm very grateful. Alright. Alright, um, and with that, I will move on to our secondary student report. And I'm not sure if David or Rick is gonna introduce.
I can introduce.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
You want them to stand up there?
Um, yeah, wherever they want. You can, well, you have to stand, so you can choose here or there, it's up to you.
Here, they're on the cam.
Hey, this is Senior Kiana Brooks.
Hey, Kiana, can I come this way just so that, there you go, then you can be on camera.
This is Senior Spencer Eisenbrow. Uh, both of these students are well-represented in our school. Spencer is in football, wrestling, and baseball. Kiana's in volleyball, she's our student manager for girls' basketball, and she's softball. And an opportunity to go with us to our Together We Make a Difference Conference at St. Michael Tech High School back in September. Reason we chose them is they're just such great leaders in our school, not just on the sports or playing surface that they play on, but in the classroom, through the hallways, in the student sections, in the cafeteria, wherever it is. You know, these, these two fine people right here are gonna do the right things all the time for us. Great leaders, uh, so we brought them with. Just maybe have a couple of questions, and I'll maybe help get them, get the ball rolling. And then if the board has maybe a few more questions, you can ask as well. So, the reason this initiative came together was about a year ago or so. A couple of schools, larger schools, had some, some issues with some race comments being made during sporting events. And that was, kinda took off a lot, especially on Twitter, I saw a lot of negative comments exposed on there, which is good, 'cause we wanna learn about it, make sure that it doesn't happen again. So the State High School League had this idea to put something together like this where schools from all around the state can gather in different regions and have a chance to learn from each other, talk about different experiences. Um, hopefully, we can learn from it, make it a learning experience, and grow from it. So I guess maybe the first question I have for you is, what was a couple of takeaways that you had from your experience there that day?
Yeah, so my biggest takeaway I found was not to cheer for, or to cheer for your team, not against the other team. So that you're having good sportsmanship and not creating enemies with other team.
Um, mine was just like seeing, like players on the, our opponents in a different way. 'Cause we're always in that competitive stage where we're in a game, but then it's completely different when it's just one-on-one talk. Like, we're completely different people when we're on the court and off the court.
I know, uh, one table that our group sat with is another conference school. And they went into that conference, uh, thinking, God, I just do not like them, I don't like that group. And then they ended up being on the same table together, and all of a sudden, when we're driving in the van home, they're like, nope, they're not so bad. So it's kinda funny all that, once you get to know people a little bit, uh, your opinions change. Um, what did you learn from some of the other people on the tables? 'Cause we ended up getting scattered into different groups. So our students got spread out with a bunch of different, it was at Tech High School, which is enormous now, brand new. Uh, so they ended up getting split up into different groups to have different experiences. So what would you say a couple of different things you learned from different people that were on your specific tables?
My big thing was, um, I was with a couple bigger schools like STMA. And they said that some of their smaller sizes were like 300 people. And I was like, we've got like 60 or 70. We, like, we'll walk down the hallway and know everybody, they walk down and know one or two people.
Yeah.
So it's just crazy how different some schools are compared to the others.
Mine was definitely the talk about our student section. And like how everyone was just like, oh yeah, we don't like that school just because of their student section. And like, this is a good reminder, like, to support your team and not go against the other team.
Alright, and then one last question I have for you is, uh, what have you taken from that conference and that learning experience to our school in our hallways, cafeteria, sporting events, student sections, whatever it is? What have you taken away from that and applied here?
I've taken away, just be a positive leader. Just show younger students how to be around sporting events and in school. Whenever you're around other people, just how to act and the way you should go.
I'd say the same thing, like just be a positive opponent and teammate, 'cause everyone's watching. And we're all there for the same reason, to let them have fun.
Awesome. Did this, did this experience influence how you treat society as a whole? I mean, did it teach you anything about how you interact with everybody, not just students or groups?
Yeah, so it, it's definitely changed my way. 'Cause like before, it kind of taught me how, like even, you can be a leader even if other people are older than you and out of high school, you can still show them the way.
Yeah, it's just a good reminder to, once again, be a good person on and off the court.
Okay.
Um, Ron Spanier said, "Good job to all kind and young adult presenters, great experience."
Alright.
Did you, just curious, so you, I know like Tech, I don't know if they, if they were there, but you're at their school, so I see they were there, but.
They had, each, each school that went there had up to 10 people, up to 10 students, and they had 25 because they're a whole sex.
There's a lot more diversity in those schools. I don't know about St. Michael, Alverville, but certainly Tech does, Al Poly does. Did you learn anything about that? I mean, we are not a very diverse school here, yeah. I don't know where I'm leaning with this, but.
I'd say just, they, they did talk about a lot of the different experiences that each school had as far as race and sexism and things like that, uh, the different things that they go through. So, um, and maybe you can chime in more with what you experienced in your different groups as well. But it was definitely eye-opening and, you know, walk in with, I'm not sure how many tables they had up, set up there, but there had to be 300 students probably there at least.
Yeah.
I guess what I'd say, we're becoming more racially diverse, even though not a great deal yet. Are we prepared for that here? Do you think the kids are ready and?
I think we're on the right track. That leadership conference definitely helps. If we can have people still see that way, it'll still help us.
Yeah, there's not really a lot of racist or racial stuff going on that I see, 'cause we're such a small school. But when we were talking with the bigger schools, there's definitely a bigger problem with that, just 'cause they are a bigger school and there's more people. So that was interesting to learn about.
So do you think through this experience, and I guess really kind of right on the, on the coattails of what Cheryl had asked, you think going through this experience then, as you move forward in life, you'll take a look at where, where you've been, the school that you've been in, and that, that very close family atmosphere that, that you've had, uh, to continue to carry that with the friends that you make, uh, people that you work with, you, you think that would help out? And, and somewhat of the reason I'm, I'm asking, I'm not trying to lead the witness, but some of the reason I'm asking that is, 'cause I know how I am. I graduated from here, very small group of people, I still know a lot of them. My, my children did not graduate from here. They, they all graduated from, uh, schools in California. Uh, and they may be a handful, ten, two handfuls, 10 people is all they know, you know? Uh, so do you think that, you know, as far as being able to bond for the rest of your life with, not, not just here, but also your work or other places that you may, maybe have?
Yeah, I think that'll definitely help us, just 'cause we went there to meet new people. It kind of opened your eye to, like, some of the time you're thinking, oh, that, that person's this and this. He's like popular, maybe I don't wanna talk to him or something like that.
Yeah.
That can open your eye, like, yeah, I can go, go up to somebody and say, hey, how are you doing, and stuff like that. Just make new friends that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, it definitely pushed me out of my comfort zone. I'm not like the type of person, go up and be like, hey, how's it going? Especially like your opponents, so it was good to just talk and be like, oh yeah, like you're not, you're not a bad person.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else from board members? Alright, well, thank you, I appreciate you coming and sharing your experience with the board. Alright. Alright, and with that, I know, um, the elementary kiddos need to catch their bus to get back and have the rest of the afternoon festivities, so thank you, everybody. Good job.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright. Thanks for coming and supporting parents.
Thank you.
Alright, um, and then I will, um, I'm gonna mix up the order just a little bit so that we can hear from David, and then when, uh, Cassie gets back, she can update on the, um, elementary, um, from her perspective. But David, do you wanna come up and talk through the secondary happenings?
Alright, trying to make the screen as big as it'll go. Alright, well, um, this is the first time that I have addressed the board with our new members, so, welcome. It's a honor and a privilege to, uh, have the position that I have in this district, and I, I've, uh, been here a while. And, um, just every day I wake up, I look forward to my, to my day. So I'll just, I'm just gonna go over a few things that, that we, um, had going on, and, um, and update on a few things, and then I'm gonna walk through kinda what our registration process is looking like this year, and a little bit about pathways, okay? First of all, um, this kinda goes well with, um, with bonding and creating relationships and, and a sense of family within our school building. So, on February seventh, uh, we had Michelle Kiefer, uh, from Centricare, uh, met with our sixth graders during connect time at the end of the day, and she, um, was introducing the Bounce Back Project. And earlier this year, our staff, uh, had him in service from Michelle and someone else on the Bounce Back Project. And what that is, is just building, uh, resilience through, um, happiness, and finding ways to, uh, focus on the good things in life, and, and having gratitude, and random acts of kindness, um, social connectedness. So, um, when they were talking about a sense of, of bonding, um, what we wanna do, starting with our sixth graders this year, is, is try to create, uh, a sense of family with that group, because they are, it's a smaller group, and, and, um, they have a long time together yet, and we wanna, we want an environment where, where they feel safe and, and kids are looking out for each other. So, uh, Michelle will be back, uh, we have two more sessions planned, uh, in, uh, in the next couple of weeks, and then, uh, we're gonna, I'm hoping to get more, um, but, uh, Michelle and I are gonna kinda work on some of the activities that go along with that. On February eighth, we had our eighth grade, uh, egg career day, and, um, we've done that annually, and we've had, uh, local businesses and, and colleges come in and, um, do different sessions with our eighth graders on, on the different areas in, um, agriculture and, and careers that go along with that. Uh, Natalie Ulich and the FFA alumni organize this event and just do a fantastic job every year. This week is, uh, Sweet Fest week, and, um, we have activities planned every day, uh, during advisory at the end of the day. And, um, and then we have coronation tomorrow at two fifteen. Uh, PBIS, uh, is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. The elementary students were talking about, um, earning reward times and, um, through their barkouts, and that is PBIS. And we started that at the elementary a number of years ago, and so now, this is the first, uh, year that we are working on the implementation of PBIS at the, starting at the middle school level. And so there's a team of us, and it's a two-year process, but we are, um, we're meeting regularly and we're working on, uh, what that model is gonna look like for us. Uh, we have training, uh, a couple more days of training at the end of February, and then we spend a lot of time in those trainings with other school districts, and, um, looking at, at what's working and what we can, we can create for our own school. So we'll, we'll give you an update on that, um, as we, as we get further along in that process, but, um, on January thirtieth and thirty-first, uh, Christie Zimmer, our school social worker, and I, um, went to a tra, a two-day training and were certified as a crisis response team member. And what that is, is there's a group, um, there's groups all over the state that, uh, where, where people are trained, and if there's a, um, a tragedy at a school, then, um, depending on the location of that, then we would get a, we have a system, there's a, there's an app and there's a system set up, we would be notified and we may be asked to, uh, go to that school, spend however long there, um, and just kinda helping staff and administration and guide their way through the process of, of, um, you know, um, communicating with families, uh, communicating with students, and, and just kinda helping through that process. A very, um, uh, a, a very moving, uh, process. And the person that, uh, did the training, uh, his name is Brian, and he's a, he's a school counselor or a social worker at, uh, uh, Canby. And, um, unfortunately, the training was, is based on experiences, and, you know, and there, there's a lot of experiences that he has had in situations like this, which we hope we never have to deal with, but, um, but he did a wonderful job. And then also, Christie and I are able to bring back, um, information for, um, for us as we look at, defining what our crisis team is gonna look like, updating our crisis, um, manuals and how we're, how we're gonna deal with those situations. So, it, hopefully I, I don't ever get that phone call, but, um, we'll be ready, and, um, it, it really is a benefit to our school too. Any questions on those things?
What's defined as a crisis? Is it just a family emergency that could influence the school, or is it something that actually happens at the school?
Sure, and so there, we went through a, a lot of scenarios that, um, so Brian is, is working through the co-op out of Marshall, and so all of his experiences are based out of that, but, um, it, it includes, uh, suicide, um, uh, you know, a death of a, a student through an accident, or a death of a staff member, or, um, you know, a school tragedy. That's, it's really kinda, there's, there's a lot of different scenarios and, and-
So, you know, like on the news, we heard about Prescott, Wisconsin this week, and Harding, and then they'll say that there'll be people at the school to meet with the students, so basically that's what you're trained to do, or?
Yeah, students and staff, and then it's kinda-
You're there present to meet with whoever wants to talk.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Okay, so registration update. Every, every year we go through the registration process and it, and it is drawn out, and we're, we're always thinking, okay, we can do this better, and we can do it differently. And so, we made some, some wholesale changes in how we're gonna do our registration this year. In the past, we've had, we have just this huge list of electives that we, that we have available for, for students. And then it, we get to the point of the registration, and there's a bunch of classes that, you know, three or four kids are interested in. Okay, so then we, we can't offer that, so then we have to find some place for those three or four kids, and then it's just a trickle-down effect, and it becomes a drawn-out process, and, um, so what we, what we're doing this year, starting with, um, our, we'll go into, to our current fifth graders, we haven't done that yet, but all the way through, uh, we're doing pre-register, registration surveys. And so, um, we have done the survey with our current sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders. And, uh, Jackie Campbell and I went into, uh, classrooms and, uh, went through the, the classes that we're offering, um, for those grade levels, we went through the required classes, answered questions from students, and then, at the end, they received an email, um, from, uh, Mr. Wolf with the survey on it. They took the survey, and then, um, we ended the survey, and then we have the results. And so what we, with the middle school stuff, we've, we've pared down a number of our electives that, that we're gonna offer, and we have an idea kind of on how many sections of some of our most popular electives that we need. So, it gives us a lot of information, and then, um, then we'll update the registration guide, and then we'll do the registration, uh, in a, in a couple of weeks, once we get through all of the other students. With the high school students, um, uh, current ninth graders, tenth graders and eleventh graders, we're gonna, next week, we're gonna start bringing those students in in small groups of about ten, and then we're gonna walk through, um, all of our course offerings, and because once you get, from ninth grade to tenth grade is a pretty big step, because there are opportunities for some PSEO, some online, uh, classes, and just unique, um, offerings, and it's not so regimented as it is in, in middle school. And then, so we wanna do that in small groups, and then we'll do the same thing, um, with our current, uh, sophomores and juniors. We're gonna get an idea, um, on the number of students who plan on doing, um, post-secondary full-time, post-secondary part-time, and, um, all their interest i- in those classes, and then again, we'll pare down that registration guide to, um, to have classes in there that, that our students are interested in, and that will just ease that process a little bit. We are also looking at kinda offering, we're losing some classes, um, we're losing one college in the school's class because of licensure. So, we're looking at ways to replace that, and then also to fill some gaps with some classes that we don't offer, but we, we feel our kids are really gonna be interested in. So we have a list of classes that, um, that will be on that survey, there'll be brand-new classes, um, students haven't, haven't taken these classes, they haven't seen these classes, and it's, it's pretty cool how you, you can do things nowadays with, with technology and online stuff. And then, our ninth graders, well, so this year our tenth graders have a, a careers class, which they're all required to take. And we haven't had a careers class in a number of years, and so we, we started with tenth grade, and next year, uh, we, we moved that careers class to ninth grade. So all of our ninth graders, that will be a, it will be a requirement. And the things that they'll do is they'll look, um, they'll do a lot of inventories, and just kinda will get a feel for what their interests are. I, I was, Mr. Savage is, is teaching the tenth graders, and I was in there the other day, and, uh, one of the things that they, that they look at is, um, lifestyle. What kind of lifestyle do you want? And, you know, how teenagers, they want the world, and, and, um, and then they, they, they match that lifestyle with their interests, and sometimes they go together and sometimes they don't, and so, um, but that's through our, the Minne- Minnesota Career Information Systems, it's a, it's a website with a, with, where you can do a whole bunch of different inventories, um, and so we're gonna bring that to the ninth graders and expose them to as much as we can. And, um, that will include guest speakers, uh, tours, um, research on, on, um, clusters of, of, uh, careers, and what it takes to achieve that, whether it's entering the workforce after school, two-year school, four-year school, beyond. We wanna, we don't want to push kids in one direction, we wanna give them opportunities to explore those things themselves. With that comes in pathways, and so, um, if you look at larger schools, Alexandria and Hutchinson, um, are, and Bemidji are really good examples of, of, um, having pathways and academies. And they have a, there's typically, it's about five different, different academies or pathways. We are not equipped to have five different pathways and academies. And so, we need to be creative in, in classes that we're offering, so that we can give our students the, the best opportunities that we can to, to, um, follow their interests, and, and we want our students to, as much as we can, we wanna guide our students to take classes that, that they're interested in, that they may wanna pursue after high school, um, something outside the box, something different, and just let them run with it. So we, we've created, um, the pathways as a way to, um, help students and families connect, um, their coursework in high school to the next chapter of their life, whatever that might be. And so, part of the, the ninth grade class will be, um, looking at, one, once, looking at their interests, seeing, you know, where they, where they think they might wanna go, and we know that we're gonna have, we have ninth graders that are gonna be on this end of the spectrum that just have no idea, you know, haven't thought about it, and then we've got students on this end that have everything mapped out for the next however many years. And so, we wanna try to meet kids where they are with that, and, um, so as they're doing the, the inventories on, on careers and colleges, we're gonna introduce the pathways as a way to, um, connect our classes to what they are interested in. And so, we, the, the pathways that we, that we have, and, and it's not a final product, we're still fine-tuning some of the, the things that go along with it, but, um, the first pathway is business, communications and entrepreneurship. Second pathway is trades, and the third pathway is health and human services. And you can pretty much put anything into one of those three categories, and we can correlate those um, with our, the classes that we offer, and some of our classes are gonna be really good and fit right into one of those pathways, but a lot of our classes are gonna meet two or three of these pathways, and that's a good thing. And so, we just want kids and families to take a closer look at what we're offering. And I think we, we have a lot of students who just, they sign up without even thinking about it. And this is, this is a chance for them to kinda build a, build a three-year plan, depending on when they have this as freshman, three or four-year plan, as, to follow their interest and, and take classes that they're interested in. This in no way is a way, is making students take certain classes, it's just if they're interested in. We're, we're kinda just providing a service that, hey, if you're interested in this, these are the classes that would go well with that. And if you decide you don't want to do that, then you can, you can pick other classes. And so, um, just a service that we're providing, and I think it's a, it's a good first step for us. We haven't focused on, on, um, on careers after high school. For a long time, it, the, the idea was that we wanted students to graduate and go to a four-year school. Well, there are so many different avenues right now, um, you know, there's just so many, the, the opportunities are just endless, and it, and the chance to make, um, really good money in so many different things, in so many careers that, um, you know, they can really be passionate about. And so, that's kind of what our focus is gonna be with these, with the ninth graders and kinda, and build, build their way through that, so.
I don't know anything about, you know, sort of what you talked about as far as academies and, and things like that, but I guess I've kind of envisioned what, what you had, uh, the way you explained it. I, uh, being in the Air Force, I was ex, I was exposed, I, I met people that had gone to this, this high school. So it is out of New York City, and it was called the Aircraft or Aeronautics, uh, High School. So once they started their high school, they had the choice, you go to a public high school, that public high school, you continue, or you could go to this high school. You had all your, your regular high school classes, but what you also did was then you learned about aircraft. So by the time you graduated, you had your airframe power plant license, uh, you had, uh, your basic, uh, uh, flight skills, and, uh, they would set you up, uh, through aircraft companies to get you jobs, and that's how I met a lot of them. There's airpods from New York when, on, on some of the big projects with Lockheed Martin Aeronautics, uh, to bring them out, because they had all the skills, so they didn't have to do any training, they had all the skills that they really needed. And, uh, so I'm taking it that's kind of what you're looking at, something close to that, to get them up to a point where they, they may need just a little bit of college or some, some Vo-Tec before they can get, get licensed or whatever, so, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it, it's, it's just, it's opportunities. So when I'm talking about academies- Yeah, it's it's just, it's opportunities, so when I'm talking about academies, um Alexandria High School. Um just a great example of students can pretty much leave there with a two-year degree.
Wow.
And so we, for a school our size, we offer a lot of opportunities um for students to earn college credit. College credit and P S E O can is really good and it's a way to uh for families to save money, it's a way to. Um you know, students who are just ready to be done with the the sitting at a desk in high school all day long. But um we wanna make sure that that students are doing those things for the right reasons. And there are many times and my son is one of them who graduated with a number of college credits. Didn't really know what he wanted to do and so you end up taking those. Electives that are transferring in and they're not, it's not really speeding anything up and so we so P S E O can be really good and it can. But it can also um you know, not have the advantages that you that you think it would.
Yep.
It does, you know, there are dollar signs attached to it and so families appreciate that when they can save some money but. Um the sooner we can get kids interested in something, then the more relevant those classes will be for them.
What you said that I picked up on was they can shift and move.
Yep.
So you get in high school, everybody's got all these plans when they get out of high school, how many of them actually followed that path? So I went to a four-year school, when I was done as a freshman, most of them weren't still on that path, some of them changed when they were sophomore. The flex and moving is what I'm really interested in, cause when I, we were up with Alexandria, it looked like it. The academies didn't necessarily give the flex and movement that you talked about, which I like exactly what you're doing. We're giving kids opportunity, but in ninth grade, let's be realistic, how many really know where they're going? But you give them something that's of interest to them, they might get there and not even be interested? Well, that's a great thing to happen in in their high school years because they can sh- shift and move. And the shift and move to me is the most important, again, I talked at an earlier meeting about pigeonholing kids. I am not interested in that at all, I like what you're talking about.
The light doesn't need to come on their freshman year, it can come on anytime and and you know. All high schools still have the the twenty-one credits that you need to graduate, you know, so those classes are always gonna be there. What we're talking about is um the extras and providing opportunities for those, so.
I'd like that idea.
It it's it's tough, it's tough and we we have to be creative in what we do. Uh we have some teachers that are that are teaching uh college in the schools classes. And the licensure is very difficult, so so a school our size, it's hard to have a lot of teachers that. Have taken the extra credits in order to um be able to do that. And so I'm hoping that over the last few years, they've they've always extended the, you know, the deadline. And so finally now, we're at the point where you have to have this, you have to meet these requirements in order to teach those classes and. So we have to bring in, look for outside opportunities for our kids and um. A little bit creative and and Janelle's been wonderful in listening to my, I would love to offer the world, but.
I I I don't know what our dropout rate is at the school, but and I'm sure that it probably works out, you never are able to do like an exit interview, why are you, why are you leaving? So I'm just wondering with something like this, you know, for for those that are bored with school, they see maybe dollar signs out there at age. You know seventeen, seventeen and a half of thinking, you know, I could be an auto mechanic and I could be working at this place and like make all the money that I want type thing. You know, to to keep them in to say, and I don't know what what you know, what you're looking at. But okay, so here we have a thing where we can set you up to have that auto uh thing and and I don't know, maybe some certificates. Through you say like Ford Motor Company or you know through Ford or even Chevy here, I think it's just absolutely excellent. You know, they keep those those kids in that that are bored and think that that there's uh you know. They can make, start making money on the outside right away, not understanding just how important that diploma is.
Yeah, well, and and so uh Mr. Gunther, who teaches our auto shop classes, students can earn some college credit from him. Um an example, so we have a, our dropout rate is next to zero. And we have a a great four-year track of graduation and then if you look at five years where students maybe didn't graduate. But then they graduate a year later, um is excellent and so I I think of one student that um. I had since, he was a first grader, I think it was my first year and last year he wanted to take another auto class, senior year. And it was the same class that he had already been in, but in four months, he already had a job lined up doing those exact things. And so absolutely, go ahead and you know, take that class and and uh you know, build those skills and so we need to be, we need to be flexible with our kid. We're trying the best we can to do that, so.
Yep.
Good, alright, any other questions?
Alright, um Ron's got a message up there, um thanks for all you do, I know a lot of kids look up to you, so. Is that from this one or that was earlier? Oh, that was earlier, sorry.
Wrong group of people.
But I do see, I do see, good job David, thanks for, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Kathy, you wanna come on up and we'll get our elementary update?
Thanks for adjusting, sorry to get.
Yep, absolutely.
Students on the bus and headed back, um thank you again for this opportunity to bring students in um and showcase the work and. Learning that they are doing at the elementary, as you heard, it is uh February, I love to read month, which is a big deal at the elementary level. Uh we've got different school-wide activities happening, stop, drop and read, if you remember that from school days, uh we have our favorite door decorating. Uh we have a guest, the reader exhibit where staff members are holding up a book and students walk through and um. Identify who is the staff member behind the book, their favorite childhood book, so that's been fun, we started that today. Um and then you saw too, reading with family groups and making those connections and sharing that passion for reading. I want to take this opportunity to recognize um our pair professionals and our food service, we did that as a district, but I do want to just highlight. Our Painesville area elementary pair professionals and our food service staff uh for the outstanding work that they do every day. Um sometimes I think our food service and our paras, they know more kids than sometimes other adults in in the organization know. Um when they get to be served their breakfast and lunch every day for uh many days of the school year. So just a, you know, a sincere thank you for the work that they do. Kindergarten registration, so on the other end of what Principal Orline is talking about, gearing up for our twenty-three, twenty-four kindergartners and. Um working with our preschool team and our kindergarten team on getting prepared for next fall already, I feel like we're rounding second base. Now we're gearing up for next year, um this year I sent out an inquiry survey to families that um who will have a child. Um age five by September one, so that way they can let us know, what's your plan for the fall? And so we can um go into that school year with some knowledge of what families are thinking and um able to support, you know, if they're on the fence. What information are they wanting, do they wanna tour, do they wanna sit down and meet with me or kindergarten teachers or or what have you? Um so that's been great, we've had um a nice um response rate, we've got received almost fifty responses now. And of those, I think all but one or two um are planning to send their child to kindergarten this coming fall. So that's exciting and that, you know, I will speak is critical um in our planning process. And so when we have kindergarten open house and registration um for March ninth, that's a Thursday evening. Um providing families that opportunity to come in and meet myself, see the school, um our kindergarten teachers as well. And um they can get that registration up and running, so that's big for us over at the elementary. Um student recognition, I want to recognize our million-word readers. We had two more reach that big milestone, Ethan Hamish and Helen Grothie, uh so they received their certificates and um were presented with. With that honor, cause that is a big milestone.
I'm assuming you're the one that counted all those words to make sure that.
I did not, I did not.
Well.
Um actually, I think some of the groups alluded to A R today and so with that computer program, when they take those assessments on the books that they're reading. That does the counting and that's the unit, so I can use my time differently. Um but that's, like I said, just great recognition and I'm very proud of our readers. Looking ahead to March, March is just as busy as February, um that is our food drive month at the elementary level and. I'm learning, that is a big deal at the elementary, we've got food lined up all throughout the hallways, we make pyramids, we, it's a big deal, so I can't wait to experience it myself. Um we are also honoring music at our schools, um that is something that we do in the month of March and so working with Mrs. Strand and um. Our other music staff to what does that look like at the elementary level. Um as I mentioned, kindergarten, open house, then also as Principal Orline mentioned, looking at our master schedule and what does that look like? Um I've been meeting with grade-level teams and talking about what's working, what's not working, what can we live with with that master schedule and. Um how does that best benefit our students? Spring conferences are right around the corner, again, looking forward uh to getting families into the school and connecting with um our teachers and talking about the successes and. The growth that our students are making and then of course, there's more that I probably don't even know yet, right? Those experiencing my first March at Painesville Elementary. Questions or comments about the elementary?
Okay. Alright.
Thank you, thank you. It's answered it all.
Yeah, I did, I did. Alright, um we'll invite our activities director to come on up and and tell us what's happening with our activities.
Well, um it is a busy time of year, we're entering sections for a lot of um activities right now and we're about to enter some more here in the next. Couple of weeks, so that's an exciting time of year and it's also tough time of year for some people who have their senior seasons come to an end, so it's always a. An interesting experience, but we looked forward to seeing a lot of people packed in the stands and supporting our participants throughout the sec- sections coming up here. Um with different sections, so think back to the fall, different sections come different procedures. So remember back in the fall when we had like football tickets, some need to be purchased online. Where a couple of days later volleyball, you could purchase cash in person, so just keep in touch with the school or check our. Um activities calendar, we keep that updated, hockey, same thing tonight, we have tickets that need to be bought online in person ahead of time. And uh apparently the wifi is really bad at that rate, so if you don't get your tickets online ahead of time, uh might be tough to get access to that website, so. Things are always different with different sections, unfortunately, I wish it was kind of a universal process, but. There are different policies and procedures and way they wanna do things, so just check in with us at the school or again, check the activity calendar to get those updates. So sometimes I don't get those until like the hockey one, for today I didn't get until yesterday. Um so sometimes those are short notice. Uh spring is just around the corner, so a lot of new seasons will be starting up as well, so we're gonna have to get some of those. Schedules posted online as quickly as we can and get those finalized. And I just wanna say thanks to all of our helpers throughout the busy winter season, so our pack fieldhouse, you know, I've said this before, has just been a huge. Um asset for providing opportunities for our people.
Rick, um my screen froze here, is the uh online ticket sales, is that kind of the the new norm going forward, is that the?
Yeah, we had this question a couple of board meetings ago, yeah, I think eventually, soon enough, it'll be the wave, the next wave of the future, it's just, makes it really simple. Our ticket takers wouldn't have to count any money, like when we did it with uh, as your ticket taker in the fall of football, all we had to do was to scan. A barcode when they came through the door, so I think eventually that'll be something down the road within a few years. Like, it's becoming increasingly popular. Um yeah, I was gonna say, is the pack presents a lot of different opportunities, of course, with all the space that we have. And just with varsity events alone, we've hosted thirty um varsity events this winter in our gyms and in our um gymnastics uh gymnasium. So we appreciate all the help from all the people collecting tickets and our supervisors, concessions workers, table um workers, announcers, officials and. Probably many more than I've forgotten, but we definitely appreciate all the work that they have put in and sacrifices they make and flexibility they have throughout the season because it's. Can be a lot, some days it's four-day week, so. It's a busy time, but it's very exciting to see, especially with some of the double headers that we've had for boys and girls, for sometimes you have gymnastics and basketball or we have. Like next Tuesday, we have boys and girls, um three levels, we have, actually we have junior high. And then we have C squad boys and girls, JV boys and girls, and varsity boys and girls basketball next Tuesday, so. All of our courts will be in use and getting good use and thankfully we have a lot of teachers who like to officiate and. Um our officials were flexible and moving times up, so it's uh it's gonna be, a packed house next week, so we're really excited about that, so it should be.
Right.
So any questions or?
I didn't have one, I should have asked one of the students here, so you talked about the training they went through, how did that um? How's that get into the whole school here, I I I'm thinking, I'll just take Friday night's gonna be intense. Have our students been prepared with the information that these students had to say, you know, this is the way we act?
Right, um I think with that group that went out there, we had ten students that went, they did a really good job of communicating that is um. Our expectations for our student sections at events like such as Friday night, it'll be intense. They've been very well behaved as far as what they're saying and how they're acting and making sure like both Spencer and Kiana said, cheering for our team. And not against our opponents and I know that's something that we we uh we talk about with our programs is making sure that we're. Cheering for Painesville, not against whoever we're going against, so.
Friday night's gonna be a big night, are we ready for that? I don't mean basketball, I mean every day as a school, it's gonna be a big crowd.
Hope so.
Have we ever had a stadium-only crowd here?
I don't know, only been here five years.
So not in your five years.
In wrestling you have, okay.
In wrestling we have.
So you know how to handle it, okay.
Before the pack. Okay, alright.
Ready.
Rick, okay, thank you much.
Rick.
Alright, thanks so much.
Can you hear me? Um I got a question, I guess my my screen froze here, I I started speaking and the, I think I'm caught up with you. Um the online ticket sales, is that kind of the new norm, I I know when I've helped collect tickets, there's quite a few. That's still, you know, the old saying, cat is king, um has that been uh? Uh how should I say this, is this kind of getting to be the new norm, has it been uh uh getting better, well-received going forward, I guess? So what kind of participation are you getting with that?
Janelle's gonna type in something in the chat to keep you updated on that one, well, yeah, we do see that as kind of being the the new norm for the future, not necessarily next year, but. Um we'll see what the section decides and if if it's something that works for us, we might look into it as well.
Yeah, I love when everybody watches me type and then I get to. And I misspelled the word and I didn't even fix it, so there you go. Alright, thank you so much, alright, um so I now I have the pleasure of introducing um Chris O'Brien, so I'm gonna invite Chris to come on up. Um she can have the hot seat, um so uh this is Chris O'Brien, our new um community education director. And so she is here to uh just uh give us our first community an update from her place in the chair, so welcome, we're happy to have you here.
Thank you, I'm excited to be here and I am thankful for the people that I work with, they've been very welcoming and and have been. Uh patient with me as I ask lots of questions about how things ha- happen here at Painesville. So I will just give you a a brief uh update of what. What has happened since I've been here and so you feel free to ask questions after or if there's other information that you would like me to bring to the table. So for the pack, um we uh just got some brand-new equipment that was delivered, um it was probably, it's like five pieces of equipment. And a few benches and so that's the exciting new thing, we had to get rid of pieces of equipment and um moves the other benches down to the uh youth. Um athletic space downstairs, we were able to spread out some of the equipment that that we um. We can recycle it rather than just throw it in the garbage, so we're able to use it at that space. There's not a whole lot of events coming up other than activities, so activity is gonna really dominate the uh the uh pack uh arena, um. But our birthday parties are picking up, so we are getting quite a few of those birthday parties. One other thing that has been uh kind of exciting but a little terrifying is that a couple of the people that have worked a really long time. a couple of the people that have worked a really long time at doing those birthday parties have changed jobs or just decided they are done working for the pack, so I'm pretty much hiring a whole new team to be uh those building attendants and be um those customer service representatives during those um birthday parties. So we'll be busy um training, in fact, we're gonna do a training on Sunday, I've never done a birthday party, so Landon, Mead are one of the people that are left, we're gonna all be there to watch him do a birthday party, so I hope like six of us are gonna be helping him do a birthday party and it's one of the black light ones, so we are all gonna learn how to do that on Sunday, including me, so. That's one, one thing that we're doing at the pack. Um, for general community ed, our spring brochure is coming out, this is the new cover and we'll be getting ready for that to to uh launch, that is gonna come out, I believe like March first. Um, that will cover March through May uh activities and one or the what's kind of our priority will be the preschool uh wraparound and summer pause registrations. Uh, they are busy, people are excited about the assignment for those classes, so that is what we're focusing on to make sure parents know where to go, what to do and how to register for those for those classes. And one of the things that's changing is we are implementing a new registration program, it's called ELEO. And it will streamline our 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 registrations for community education, um preschool wraparound care and school age care. It'll also um house the uh monthly payments that those programs uh need to have happen. Um, it also has a facility scheduling module, so it is gonna streamline what we're doing instead of three or four different programs that don't really speak to each other, so we are hoping that that will make us much more efficient in our space. ELEO will also provide uh through the childcare and the preschool pieces, it also provides extra security when parents need to pick up their kids. Especially around childcare, because they're picking it up in the after hours time, so they'll be able to staff will have iPads that will, they'll be able to actual sign in and sign out and have pictures of people and we'll be able to um manage those um out in the field, whether that's in the school or out on the playground. And possibly even on field trips, that they'll be able to manage those um, that security protocol, um. It also puts a lot of more ownership to the parents because they create their accounts, they can pick their days, they can sign up for a community ed class, they can um register their child for school age care all in one spot. And they can set those accounts up, so it it's like an Amazon experience for um for uh community ed and childcare, so that's that's what they're telling us, so I'm hoping so, because I like to shop on Amazon, so. Um, that is our big new thing, so on top of what is going on, we're going to learn and implement this program, so. We'll be, we'll be busy in the next few weeks trying to make that happen. We're hoping to have, we're not opening the wraparound care preschool or summer um pause program registration till March twenty seventh. Um, so that will give us some time to get that implemented and then let parents know and let people know, hey, it's just a little bit different, you can set up your account ahead of time, so you're ready to pull the trigger when it, when we open the open it up on the March twenty seventh. So, um, it'll be a busy time here in March, that will be focused and trying to get that ready. Um, pause program, the school year one, uh it's a before and after school um child, school age childcare. I looked, there was a hundred and seven registrants, uh that, so it kind of just trickles up every week if someone else needs childcare and we're able to provide that, so we can, are open, so parents can get their child in and out of here. Livestream, that is, I'm gonna tell you right now that that one is not something that I've been focusing on, fortunately Jacob Bertram and Jeremy Schmidt um have been covering those programs and I really don't have a lot to do with it right now, but we have talked about um getting together in March, so after some of these seasons are done and then spring seasons are just getting going to talk about our spring activities, we're gonna inventory and bring all the materials that, all the different technology pieces, the cameras, the streaming boxes, everything, inventory them and get them in one spot, or kind of in multiple spots, so we're gonna get that back in one location. Um, so that, so I'll know about the livestreaming at the next meeting, hopefully, okay. Um, preschool programming, we're we're going to meet tomorrow about the playground and uh so I'll get more information of what the plan looks like, um. We already know that community education is going to be part of the, to help make that happen with dollars. But we're also talking about what other fundraising opportunities are going to occur and when they're gonna occur, so we'll be meeting tomorrow and I will learn more about that. And then finally, Janelle and I, we met with a representative with MDE, we applied for some dollars for voluntary pre-K. Typically have not gotten those dollars, but we're hoping that, we'll see if the legislation has uh poured a few more dollars into that, where it would be a new site and it would open up um more scholarship opportunities for our four-year-olds. And then allowing our other scholarships to focus maybe for three-year-olds or maybe and this would be for fiscal year two twenty twenty-four, so we're we've got some time, maybe it would expand our opportunities, so, we're hoping.
That's it, there's a, the, part of the reason we thought it was important to do that this year is because there's been an extended, or there's been a renewed um level of conversation legislatively with all the additional funding on your voluntary pre-kindergarten programming, so um that's why we we thought, well, let's just give it another go, so, we'll see.
Community, on the community education side, oh, I I'm not, I heard this, I don't know how true it is. That that the community ed does not offer a GED course.
So, I have not been able to look at the ABE program that we have, so we are part of a consortium.
Gotcha.
There is an instructor.
Okay.
And so, quite frankly, I just have not dealt dove into that program. But I know that you guys are part of a consortium and that ABE is offered and with adult basic education, usually GED is part of that.
Gotcha.
And possibly even adult diploma.
Okay.
So it just depends on what your consortium offers.
So, so what I had heard was that through the um uh like the silver houses, you know, as far as what they do for chemical dependency.
Sure.
That because there wasn't a GED course offered by community ed, that they've taken that on and they're providing that, I have no idea, so that's why I was asking that question.
Usually there is, but it would be something that I will certainly take a look at, are you saying that that, um, would it be um those houses are in Painesville?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so I would, I will uh, I will certainly take a look at that, but usually if you're part of consortium, that they are offered and we just need to to find out um how we disseminate that information.
Okay.
Yep.
And I've I've not heard that, I've not heard from um the providers of the houses that they've had an issue or concern.
Okay.
Um, that certainly is something that we would, I mean, as a part of that consortium and the adult basic education um partnership.
Yep.
That is something that that we would have available, so, they just need to.
Yeah, I'll pass that information back down the chain and let them know that.
Yeah, absolutely, and that is on my list to contact the consortium, find out what meetings are, make sure I'm on their list.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions?
Um, your ELEO program?
Yeah.
Is that going to cover um all community ed children, smaller children's? Baseball, soccer, whatever that one.
Yeah, yeah, we just won't launch those until fall, so for summer, the only group or for the next catalog, the only group that we're going to put on ELEO will be the childcare preschool wraparound care, that'll be our first kind of soft launch and then in the fall we'll have community ed and, you know, hopefully we'll have facilities, all of that in the fall. We didn't wanna do that much new, we just figure we're gonna be pretty busy just making sure this particular program um, I've heard just gets really excited about registering, so I just wanna make sure it looks good and we don't mess it up, so, yeah.
And another thing, in the spring brochure, do you have information on birthday parties that are available and that type of thing?
I believe she does in here, usually.
Yeah, segment in there.
Yeah.
There usually is.
Yep, she usually does, has it in here, yep.
And I know a lot of community members don't know it's even an option.
Yeah.
That they have black light parties, it's pretty exciting to see that stuff going on.
And definitely there'll be some, you know, as I'm looking at our webpages and um I, this will be after we get our ELEO going, but I'd really like to talk about some packaging and branding and and really get our web pages to um connect with the school and um use those for promoting those birthday parties and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright.
Alright, okay, thank you much.
Alright, okay. Okay, so moving along to um budget development process, so.
Do we have a building grounds supervisor updated?
Oh, yes, thank you, um, that's, this will be my last one, there's. Yeah.
Okay.
I gotta take a break.
Got it, okay, yep, um, so we have offered um the buildings and grounds position to um Ken Ozendorf and he has accepted that position. Um, he will be um official as of, um, he's actually starting on the twenty-first and so we're happy to have him on board and so that really is my update today, is just to to let everybody know that we have filled that position. Um, I'm excited to have, um, you know, Ken has been very connected to the school in a number of um, a number of manners and I think uh he's got some really good vision for kind of big picture items, so I'm excited to have him on board, so. That's my, that is my update for buildings and grounds. And with that, would you like me to move on?
Yes, please.
Okay, so um budget development process, so this is the time of year that we we really do start digging into budget for next year. And I'm gonna start by just um uh pulling forward the first document and I'll share this um, this as well. Um. And and this is not anything that's so incredibly, whoops, I didn't mean to do that, I meant to present. Um, this is not anything that's so incredibly um exciting, but it really does just kind of help us walk through the timeline of what we're gonna be doing and talking about in the next couple of months, so. Um, with the budgeting process, you'll kind of see, um, this work session, we just start talking about um what the process is, we're gonna review um the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, um and we're gonna talk a little bit about fund balance. Um, at the business meeting in uh February, which is in two weeks, uh we'll start talking about any reduction targets um and program development FTE recommendations, so you'll see as we kind of talk through this process um in a little bit more detail coming up, you'll see what the things are that administratively we're taking a look at. Um, in February at the business meeting, we'll also have our uh a revision of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um, the March work session, you're gonna see we start um doing again some more budget just updates, we're gonna project revenues, enrollments um and make initial recommendations for reductions, that would be um, that would be a work session, so that's not going to be an action item, but it would be a um, just a working session. You'll see in the business meeting in March, we um have um any assumptions for considerations for unrequested leave of le- uh leave of absence. That is for any continuing contract teachers, you'll see further down um that the the timeline for notice of any uh probationary teachers would be uh July one, and this is typically, this is talking about certified staff because that's the language that has the most specific guidelines and and timelines that we have to adhere to. But then we try to use that for any other positions as well. So, um then you'll see um in May at our business meeting, we will have our second, our second um twenty-two, twenty-three budget presentation and if there's any um any changes that would need to be approved, that would be another read of the of that uh the revised twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And by law, we have to have a budget in place and approved by June thirtieth, so you'll kind of see that timeline, okay? So, some of the things, why, what are the things that we're watching right now and what are the moving targets? So legislatively right now, we are, it is, it is a full gamut of activity. We are watching the per pupil formula increase and the the budget um the budget plans that are coming through in um both the, in the House, the Senate and from the governor, right now they don't all align, so it'll be interesting to see where they, where they come out for the per pupil funding. Um, there's mandates that could affect the district, for example, there's um, there are some potential um unemployment mandates and paid family leave mandates, that if those go through, that could have some impact on the district and we have to pay attention to what those potential impacts could be. There is some special education cross subsidy funding and there is, there is universal free lunch um program that has um if you have been paying attention, that cleared the house um last week, so that continues to move forward. Now, why that's a big deal for us is because again, as we've talked about compensatory revenue has historically been tied to universal free lunches or has been tied to um the free and reduced lunch applications, so we are very, very um we are advocating very loudly to say, just make sure you don't forget if we um, if you and go move forward with the universal free lunches, we're appreciative of that, that's wonderful, um but don't forget about compensatory revenue, right? So we're, we're making sure that the legislators are aware of that. We also, um, student enrollment is, again, it's a moving target, so when we look at student enrollment and why I say it's a moving target is because if you think about to this time last year, uh we had a projection of kindergarteners, but then when it came to registration we were down about ten kids, I mean, it was a significant number of students which ultimately impacted the recommendation for our kindergarten staffing, so that student enrollment is is a really big deal. That's why you heard um both David and Cassie, the elementary and secondary principals, talk about their student enrollments and for kindergarten and then registration for classes, because that really does play a big part in our budget development. Uh, we do, um, this is the time of year where we are doing uh grant application approvals, so we have our um ADSIS AdSys grant which is um a pre-intervention uh program to provide services in in hopes that um we we don't need to refer students to for special education services by providing um just pre um some interventions that are very targeted and specific that might help uh just address very specific skill deficits. Um, we also have an achievement and integration application, that's part of, so um achievement and integration is part of a world's best workforce, but there's a specific grant that needs to be completed there, uh which also um have dollars attached to those, so those are some things that are, and why I say they're moving targets is because if for some reason those won't be approved at the same level, that would impact our funding, okay? Um, and then also we are moving into contract negotiations, this is the, this year have all of our bargaining units um that are open for contract negotiations, so that becomes uh another piece that we need to pay attention to. So the next steps, as I talked about the high school preregistration, some grade levels are complete, um Mr. Orline talked about the uh, he talked about the surveys that he, were already completed for sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Um, Cassie talked about um the elementary kindergarten um registration that kind of went out as a, again, just to kind of find out where we are at. This is also where we take a look at the strategic plan and talk about are there things that um we need to make sure that we stay focused on um and as we look at where our budget comes in, what that looks like. Um, we also do um a workload analysis for special education and English language learners. Um, are, we are a member of the West Central Education District and West Central Education District helps us with some of our workload analysis. So that's a, it's also always a benefit to have a third party come in and kind of help take away some of the the perspectives of what you think you know versus just kind of what's actually happening, so. Um, so those are some of the next steps that are taking place. So that's the the process of of budgeting um as we um as we sit today. So then I wanted to start um bringing some information to share with you, is there any, are there any questions about the process before I kind of dive into some information, preliminary information? So, the first document here that I'm gonna show you is a document that's that's um for existing board members is gonna be somewhat similar. Uh, new board members. Uh new board members, I'm gonna kind of walk you through a little bit of of this um kind of step by step, so what you're going to see um, okay, so what we do is we track kind of the, we look at it by the fit, by the year, the revenues expenditures, the difference, whether you're in a deficit spend what are and what our fund balance is, so the fund balance is calculated by looking at the percentage of our expenditures um in uh the the fund balance in comparison to um the predicted expenditures, okay? So in twenty one twenty two, you will see that we have a sixteen point one percent fund balance but you'll also see that we had a two hundred and ninety four thousand dollar deficit, okay? So that is um, that is final after audit, so now we come down and take a look at our twenty two twenty three. So if you think about our twenty two twenty three um budget was originally approved with over a four hundred thousand dollar deficit. So I wanna highlight why this is not predict predicted to be quite so, quite as bad as we were hoping, or quite as I said that wrong. It is not as bad as we anticipated, there we go, okay, that was good, yeah. So here's what happened, um so I'm gonna, I'm gonna scroll down to the bottom and I'm gonna show you in this in italics uh the italics here at the top of the page. So we received an increase in special education aid to the tune of about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's a big I want to just reiterate that special education funding is very volatile and it is super unpredictable. I I will tell you that the the, as a former special education director, I always, always, always said budget conservatively because there's swings that you cannot account for and you cannot predict. So that is what we have done, we did predict um conservatively and then we did receive some aid, which is um to the tune of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's great and we're we're, that's the the side of the swing we wanna be on, okay, so that helped our deficit. The other thing that you're gonna notice is that we have um a decrease in expenditures, so I've as as you saw about ten minutes ago, how excited I was to say I don't have to do another buildings and grounds report because we ain't both to hire somebody. That was savings for the school district, but we need to be mindful of that because that that expenditure now will come into play next year, okay? So, so I'm gonna scroll back up to the top and so you'll see in twenty two twenty three we are predicted to have approximately a hundred and two thousand dollar deficit spending and you'll see what that does then is that brings our fund balance down to fourteen point four percent, okay? And then we start looking at moving forward to twenty two twenty three, now there's a lot of assumptions that are made and as we walk through the budgeting process, I'll share with you what some of the assumptions are that we're making and you'll see where they're conservative and you'll see where um where we we might just say, you know what, we just have to remain conservative based on or what I what I recommend to remain conservative. I just wanna add one piece from the fund balance perspective, that fourteen point four by board policy, what we mu- what we need to maintain is at a minimum of twelve percent, okay? So we're okay, but there are things that I think the 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 board really wants to consider as you look at budgets, that I'm gonna talk about in just a little bit, that um where I would like, I would like the board to be um really mindful of in in approving a budget for next year, so um bear with me on that. So what are some of the changes in revenue that we're expecting from twenty two to twenty three? So you will see uh what we predicted, so as I mentioned um with the the moving targets um in our considerations as we look at the planning, um I had talked about the volatility of the basic formula and that in all different um uh budget platforms that are moving forward, it's not the same right now. So this is a very conservative um budget of just one percent on the on the formula. Well, do I think it will be too, it might, but over in the red column, you're gonna see that for every one percent it adds about sixty eight thou- sixty eight thousand dollars in basic education aid, okay? So that's something that we're gonna take into consideration and as we get further in the legislative process, we'll be able to revise this, okay? Then you're also gonna notice the next line, next year we will receive our our referendum aid that is based on the four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil. That is wonderful news for our school district, again, I wanna say thank you to the community for supporting the operating referendum because that brings in approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Again, that's gonna be based on per pupil unit and you will see above in the um where we talked about the increase in state aid. Uh we're basing our our calculations on nine hundred and eighty four point six adjusted pupil units in twenty three twenty four um and in twenty two twenty three, we've been at about nine hundred and eighty one. Okay, so that's kind of what we're using as our estimates, okay? You're gonna notice then some um so both the loss of ARP funds, the pand- the pandemic enrollment loss aid and the removal uh or um sorry, removed ESSR funding, so that was COVID money. Okay, that was the COVID money that came into schools that were either um we are either at the tail end of like a two-year grant application or a three-year grant application, so those are, those are considered as um negative revenues, okay, cuz we don't have them anymore. Uh there is this one, you see the ESSR funds left for twenty three twenty four, there was one grant that was uh written over the course of three years and the twenty three twenty four school year will be the last year that that grant, that grant money comes in. And then you'll see an increase in compensatory revenue from a hundred and four thousand dollars to two seventy nine. So why is that, if you remember, I've talked about direct certification, that's a result of direct certification, okay? So again, this is one of the reasons why um as as the universal lunch um proposal moves for moves forward um this is one way that they've taken into account compensatory revenue is by using the um the direct certification but um there is still revenue that we we do get from families completing forms that are not direct certifications, so it's still something that to have on our radar. So then you'll see our net change in revenue in um in uh from twenty two twenty three to twenty three twenty four we're still, um our revenue is still down about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars um for twenty three twenty four. So then we start taking a look at our expenditures, okay? So as I mentioned, it is a bar, it is a negotiating year and so our contracts, we do not have a set dollar amount. Um so we have to just be mindful of that and so we just kind of do a a rough calculation of and that and in this estimate, you'll see we put in approximately three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, okay? So then you'll also see the changes in expenditures, so we also are removing the expenditures for the indoor air quality project, um because obviously that project is complete and we don't have the revenue coming in anymore, so we don't have the expenditure either, okay? Um and now the the second to bottom line is you're gonna see added back in positions that were unfilled in twenty two twenty three. So that's a predicted about a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars, okay? So it was, it was wonderful for this year, but then we knew that some of these positions needed to be filled for next year, okay? So this is where you're gonna see zero dollars currently in reductions. Um that is where I do fully predict that next um at our uh February, end of February board meeting that I will be coming to you with um some recommended reductions and and I'll be telling you why as well, okay? So when I look at that, the, I guess, what are the things that I look at and and use to determine if I would make a recommendation to the board to um to set a target for reductions? So you're gonna see that I'm gonna evaluate registration numbers, we're gonna look at our courses, we're gonna look at where um our offerings are and we're gonna take a look at how we're offering um uh how we're sharing positions, we take a look at all of those things that are um are driven by registration, okay? Whether it's kindergarten, you're gonna see, um I think we have to evaluate if our kindergarten uh numbers weren't bringing back that fourth teacher or if we um or if that kindergarten number is still low, we had some increased numbers in kindergarten, do we have a section for a section of first grade? We don't know that yet until our 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 registration numbers come in, but that's something that that we um I think need to take into consideration. You're gonna see that we're gonna take a look at um program effi- program numbers and efficiencies, when I talked about workload analysis, that's part of what that is is taking a look at the the FTEs that we have to provide services. Um we're gonna take a look at retirements and just determine possible savings via attrition, so what that means is when somebody retires can we get by and can we function without rehiring that position? And what would that look like from a student offering perspective? Can we still meet all the course requirements, can we still provide all the opportunities? Do we have the 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 pieces and the pathways that we need, okay? Um we are gonna evaluate our AdSIS programming and achievement and integration programming, I talked to you about those grant applications. So again, making sure that we're maximizing that revenue that can come in from those grant applications and then is there ways that we can use that revenue to um maybe do some creative um programming and and have opportunities for kids that um might be different or or just enhanced and or just maybe making sure that we don't have to make a reduction in the area that um that we otherwise might have to, okay? Um this is the area where I I think it's really important for us just to spend a little bit of time talking about because um as we were were pushing hard in the operating referendum um we were really unsure where that was gonna come in and and we were unsure what that would mean for our facilities. So if you think back to when the indoor air quality project bids came through um we had um a a lengthy discussion about um how we funded that indoor air quality project, okay? And the project was funded ultimately by um we we chose uh had three options, we could use some ESSR money, which we did um and then we had to make a determination of whether or not we um tapped into our long-term facility maintenance money or if we use the large project bond money. Um ultimately, the district, uh the board determined to use the long-term facility maintenance money um and that we have about a seventy five thousand dollars annually that's set to pay back for that project. So that that does take about then seventy five thousand dollars out of our long-term facility maintenance money. Um we have a lot of facility needs, now that we know what our um op- what our operating referendum dollars are I think it's really a uh an important task for the board to really dig into our facility needs and look at what do we need from our buildings and how are we going to pay for that over the course of time? Because we've committed some money to the repayment of the indoor air quality project and I and I'm I don't remember off the top of my head if it's ten or fifteen years and I can look into that for sure, but I think it is really important for the for the board to be thinking about, is it, is it, is it how are you gonna pay for the needs and of the facilities that are that are coming up? Um and I um when I'm looking at reductions and I'm looking at um efficiencies I am gonna take into account some of those upcoming needs that we have for our facilities but I'm sure that we can have a a a plan to start budgeting and planning for our facility needs. So and I'm not talking about like, I'm not talking about fluff needs here, I'm talking about um our football field. You know, we still don't have lights for our football field, I'm talking about the replacement of the water line that goes under that also came on out of our long-term facility maintenance, I'm talking about roof systems, I'm talking about, right? So all of those things that we we know are there, we need to strategically plan for how to pay for those, okay? Um I just saw a question. Okay, sounds good. Um uh so those are all things that that are discussions that are happening administratively as I think about what my recommendation would be to the board to consider for the twenty three twenty four budget. Are there any questions on this document or on on that process so far? So just as kind of for our our purposes, um you'll see um this is a a document that you'll have seen year over year and the reason I put that in there is just because it has the um the uh ADMs for twenty 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 one and beyond, so you'll see that um that, oh, let me hang on, Ron, I'm gonna share that with you. And again, the reason that's so important is because that's how we generate our funding are based on the on the student count, okay? So that's why we pay so much attention to these numbers. Um and then as a as a reminder, our early childhood special education students generate about forty percent of an ADM, so they're not a full student count, but we have a, get a portion of the funding for that. And then the next document that I'm gonna share with you is another one that um that we've looked at a number of times um but it's it's just our year to date um uh for our ins and outs and our ups and downs, okay, so you'll see again the um, and I'm gonna make that one a little bit bigger. So again, you're gonna see the green, um just as a sort of for a visual, the green means it was an add or a an add a student, that there was an increase in students and the red means that there was a decrease in students, okay? So this is up to date as of the fifteenth of February and so then you can see where our current uh student count is. And then um off to the right, it's just the reminder of how um how the the number of students calculate into um average pupil units, so um this is just data for you to kind of see, the reason I like pulling this up is cuz you can see the the variation in the ups and downs of our student by month and it's really by every two weeks, you can kind of see that, that visual. Any questions on those?
I like to see the last part here cuz the hidden thing here is when we got our last audit report it was talking about our student counts
Mm-hmm.
before COVID hit, we had student counts that were a lot larger.
Mm-hmm.
Those student counts make a lot of difference in this budget
Absolutely.
that we're having to deal with here and so in the process of budgeting, what I've seen over the years is it never is a discussion about bringing more students in. It's a conversation, but it's not, it is a big deal for us. If we were at one time at close to nine hundred and fifty kids, I think they could all with the audit report that well, those fifty children times with the state funds
Mm-hmm.
makes a lot of difference in our budget, we would have a whole different look at this thing and like we talked about maybe re-grand opening that area that happened um the the excitement was in the process. We grand opened after it was all over with, but we're not seeing the student count.
Right.
So do we need to do it again or what do we need to do? Just some extracurricular things to see if we can generate our student count because if we can generate the student count, um it will make a lot of difference. I think some things are gonna be somewhat automatic, I honestly believe when the floor lane comes through. I was in the store downtown for years here, always wanted better traffic between here and St. Cloud. Nobody else really thought it was a very good idea because they thought everybody was going through the cloud but there are people there that may want to come this direction and right now, if you look at the winters coming through some of the areas that we had, we didn't have that. Look what happened to Cold Spring and Recorrie with that floor lane. Look at the numbers, I mean, it made a whole different thing, we have that, but how do we, how do we generate that? The referendum that we had wasn't even close to what we asked here before. Do we even remotely think our expenses went down?
No.
It's ridiculous, we passed that based upon a survey that was the public would accept.
Yep.
But what we do have the ability to is see, and maybe it's just a matter of everybody thinking about it. What can we do to pool our ideas to bring students in and the
So and I think I I think some of um we need to think about what do we have to offer that um kids could get in our neighboring communities that we don't offer here or what are the things that they would choose to go there instead of here? Or more importantly, what can we innovatively creatively do and offer? I think our CTE programming is absolutely amazing and I think it it's a phenomenal um opportunity. Um what I also know about high school kids is there's a lot of kids that if they're established in their in their school as an elementary kid, they're probably not gonna leave their their peers and colleagues to come here just to take a class unless their peers and colleagues come here to take a class, right? So I think we have to think big picture system wide of how do we, what do we create and to draw students that's unique to the people of the schools, cuz I I you I hear what you're saying, Bruce, students absolutely are, that's that's our biggest our biggest um revenue source, we need students and then we can continue to grow and offer, yeah.
So we take a community of that character here, quite often that we're somewhat of an elderly community. Quite often that we're somewhat of an elderly community. I've heard that for, for years. Well, many of the people of that group might want their kids to come here.
Sure.
Many of those people might not be on all of our computer stuff. So do we get some of what's going on somehow out to the public? Like in trades and some of the others? It's kind of like, how do we take the school from bragging about what, what's going on here to keeping it all really quiet on the inside? I could take almost every instructor in here and if I really knew all the extra things that they did, people would be excited about it.
I think there are a number of people that, yeah.
The group of people, because the group of people in the area are the ones that are probably going to have our biggest driver to get people to come. But that group that we're talking to may not be in any of our communication information. A number of years ago, um, Kimball put together a brochure and they actually advertised for kids.
Yeah.
But it was a big brochure that was all folded up. It was one sheet, whatever the press sizes is, they folded it up, it mailed as a one sheet, just kind of hitting all the parts of the community. So I don't know what the answers are.
There are definitely different ways that we can be publicizing and promoting our community um, and our school and what it is that we have to offer. Um, I think when, um, when families are looking, um, do they have places to look for housing here? Does our, does our community have housing to draw families in? Even if, even if they, they want to come here, that's a big, a big need within our community is, is does our community have a place for families to come and live? So that's something, even if they wanted to, Bruce, you know, we have to make sure that that's there.
Right, but there's always a reason people won't come. So there's lots of communities around us have exactly the same problem. But have they, um, have they grown? Eden Valley over there didn't have huge monster places for everybody to build over there. But they pulled a lot of students um in the years past.
Sure.
Um, that district, um, I think is close to our population, might even be bigger than us now.
They're about the same, yeah.
So I don't know what the thing is. I hear that about that and, and all the different things that we have. We sit in here with a hospital, which most small communities don't have, with lots of people working there. Well, is there opportunity for them to come here with their kids?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a place for them to build a house? Or other people to build a house? We now have big apartments that have gone up that should eventually in this process create a place where homes would be available for new people coming to town. There's a lot of parts to this. I think we just need to talk a lot more about what we do here and make sure as much as possible that everybody knows about it. People that are active in our sports, if you wanted to know how we did in sports, you don't have to look very hard, it's all over everywhere, right? What about our academics? What about some of the rest of the stuff? Yeah, it's not as often as sports, but it doesn't have to be that way.
Mm-hmm.
I think, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's not a school problem, it's a community problem. It's not just us trying to, but the whole community needs to pull together and say, what do we want to do if we want to grow?
What, what we have is, it is a three-pronged jobs, housing.
Right.
School. And many of the jobs that we have here are going to, when it comes to picking, rating the three things that families are looking for out of need, they're mostly looking at job, housing availability, and then the school. Because they're, they're living in a, in a situation where they're, they're in need. And that's the, that's what they're looking for. And we don't have a lot of housing. Those apartments are great, but they're expensive, extremely expensive. And um, they, they price a lot of people out of, out of moving there. And that, that's an issue and, and we've, we have great things here, but when people are, are transient and moving somewhere, school is usually the third thing that they're looking at because they're just trying to survive. And so that's where it becomes a community thing. You know, are we, are we providing housing? Are the jobs paying a livable wage? And then is our school going to be um good for them? We get a lot of kids from the valley all the time. But if they're not coming here because they're having a great experience at their previous school. And so, you know, it, it really works that way where we have, we have people just trying to survive. And school doesn't weigh as high as job and shelter.
Right, so I just want to look at housing as an, as an excuse. We have to do everything that we possibly can to see what we can do. Um, the problems we're talking about are no different to anybody else. But this, we're responsible for this budget and we're responsible for these kids. And one avenue we have is to bring students in. I'm not sure exactly how to get there.
And you know, Bruce, I think the other piece though is when we think about if we're going to draw students in, where, how are, how are our families that are moving here going to find us? They're going to find us through um online resources. They're going to find us through realtors. They're going to find us through the Minnesota Department of Education. They're going to find us, how, so how are we presenting our information in a way that is appealing? So that they want to choose us over New London, choose us over Eden Valley. Thinking about the, the four lane, choose us over going down fifty-five to B B E. Choose us over going up to Recorie. We, if we're going to look at that and if we're going to draw families that are maybe going to come for work or if they're going to relocate because if I've got, you know, grandparents are in the area or aunts and uncles are in the area, what is it that we're offering? How is it that we're doing it? And I hear what you're saying, we need to get our message out in multiple platforms. And, and we, I think we did that with the referendum. I think we got our information out in multiple platforms. Um, I'd be curious if it, you know, what we didn't ask, you know, where did you find your information?
It's a good place to start. Our referendum went out, we didn't have a hundred percent of votes. We had more votes to make it successful. But how do we take the town that has all that right now? And how do we give all the people here so the people here are our salespeople? I mean, if we have somebody that don't even have their family here and they're at a reunion somewhere, somebody says, hey, you know, we're having trouble in our school here. How's your school? Oh, our school is fantastic. Gosh, if that's what they say, that's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
If they know nothing about what we're doing, we are not successful.
Sure.
And so were people upset that the referendum passed? Sure, they could have been. There were a fair amount voted against us. Do you think that we are giving those individuals the information to say, listen, yeah, I know maybe it didn't, everybody, maybe it wasn't a hundred percent here, whatever. But here's what we're doing and we, we keep on hitting that.
And I think, I think it's how, how are we actively engaging our community? What is it as a school district that we're going to do that will actively engage our community to find out what do you want of our school?
Mm-hmm. But do we get to housing? That's always a fascinating one for me. What's the city supposed to do about it? What's township supposed to do about it? Housing creates its own solution by demand. I mean, I'm not sure that I, that I don't think other entities of our community are failing. We just need to talk more about what we have. Anyway, that one will be on my.
Yeah, and so I, and I, and I don't know what like our city council, what it, what it does, how it advertises, if they do any advertising, you know, for the school. I know they would in a sense, you know, talking about the community of Haynesville, but how specific they are. And I, I don't know if you've had a chance to talk, if, if they even try to engage with you, you know, to say, hey, what is it that, that we have here? So when we go out on the road, when we're trying to do things, we can try to sell, sell them, you know, people that we need in.
Well, as, as a, for instance, there was a, there was a beautiful video that was put together about our, our bus, our, the um, the um businesses and it was put together by the chamber. It didn't mention the schools at all. That was, I was, I, it would, it was a, no, it, it did a beaut, that wasn't the intent of the video. But if it's to draw um people into our community, we want to be partners in that, right? So I think we have to think about that.
Yeah.
So for the sake of time, are we, are you okay with me moving us along?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and, and I, and I, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this back um because it's part of our strategic plan. So I feel like I, I need to continue to bring this conversation forward. And, and I think it, I really do think if we do this right, our portrait of a graduate, our profile of a graduate, the picture of a person, whatever we want to call it, can really help us sell who we are as a school district and what we do. Okay? David talked about the, the um pathways and you're going to see pathways referenced in here. They go hand in hand and it really is talking about, so, so I want to spend just a couple of minutes um, uh, just clicking through and these are links just to websites. And you're going to see school districts that are identified and how, and, and I chose some that are neighbors and I chose some that are, are, are similar sizes. So you'll see, um, whoops. A tab. So you're going to see, um, so the Byron Public Schools, um, their profile of a graduate. So again, and one of the things I want you to kind of watch for some common themes here. So um, our students come to us with a unique set of, of needs, of skills, passions and talents and will leave us to live in a global economy. In these complex environments, mastery of core knowledge alone will not drive their, their success. Our students will also need to be provided with a deep, relevant learning experiences that develop twenty-first century skills and dispositions to ensure they're college, career and life-ready. So think about our, our mission and vision. Our mission statement, that's essentially what it is. Okay? So what have they done? They've identified some core anchors, things of areas of emphasis that they can, um, they continue to talk through. I'm not going to play the video, you guys, it's, it's LinkedIn here, you can come back and look at it. But it's educators talking about how it, it influences and changes their, their, um, the work that they do in addition to mastery of content and providing opportunities. It's looking at the whole child and, and developing those twenty-first century skills. So whether we're talking about creative thinking, whether we're talking about um being a, a critical, a critical thinker, a problem solver, um, being cooperative, whatever it is. Okay, so this is just another one school district. So this is Byron's example of how they've highlighted the work that they do within their school district. Okay? Um, so the next one I'm going to share with you is New London Spicer. Okay, so it's our neighbor. Um, so, oh, let me share this for the. Okay? So again, the vision, the mission, the belief. And then they go down to the portrait of a graduate. Okay? They want to see leadership, communication, responsibility, problem solver, perseverance and.
Global citizen.
Global citizen. Thank you, I could not read that. David, I need your cheaters. Oh, that wouldn't help me much, would it? Um, but anyways, so again, all of those things are in addition to content mastery. We know that kids can't come, they can't graduate with just the knowledge without some of these other skills. I think about um Gerald, your conversation of, of a kid seeing like they, I've got, I've got everything I'm going to do right after school. Why do I need to stick through this? Why do I need to persevere? Why should I push through and finish this diploma? Doug, what's it going to do for me? Today, the vision might be nothing, but what does it mean in the future? Right?
Exactly.
Okay, so this is New London Spicer. Okay, and, and so you'll see, um, it links into their world's best workforce, which a lot of, and, and I'm going to be honest with you. I'm hearing a lot of the words that are in these plans and in these portraits of a graduate or profiles of a graduate in the work that we're doing. It's, it's setting it forward in a very concrete and purposeful manner. Okay? So then let's take a look at Watertown Mayor. So Watertown Mayor is again, um, it's a little bit closer to the metro, but so you're going to again see a visual and then it's going to break down a creative problem solver, effective communicator, um, being resourceful, self-motivated learner, personal responsibility, critical thinker. So those are the, the things that they want all of their students, whether they're in kindergarten or twelfth grade to work through and, and possess. And then how are they doing that and, and linking that into their content mastery of whatever is being taught? Okay? And then um, Little Falls Community School, so again, not super far from here. Um, you'll see how they've identified their profile of a graduate. It's the overview of this, overview of the skills, knowledge and dispositions graduates need to possess in order to thrive in the world of work. It was developed by soliciting input from businesses, industry leaders, counselors, administrators, career tech, uh, teachers. Theirs is more focused on, okay, so um academic excellence is the first thing. And then we're going to talk about, so you've got content mastery, creative and critical thinkers, continuous learners, some skills and communicator, collaborator, collaborator, digital citizen, personal development and engaged citizens, self-directed, resilient and healthy individual. Okay? Again, each of the, this was done in conjunction with their communities. Every single one of these has been done collaboratively with community leaders, whether it's faith-based organizations, whether it's industry, whether it's a chamber, whether it's a city council, but all of them have been done with community input and community uh support. And then the last one that I want to show you is Alexandria's. So um, uh, Alexandria's portrait of a graduate. So they have again, content mastery is number one, critical thinker, um, hmm, civically and.
Global.
Globally engaged, uh, critical thinker, collaborator, oh, creative thinker, uh, critical thinker, collaborator, communicator, self-directed. Okay? Now on this website, if you want to see more about the academies that um, that David was talking about, this has, um, this has some different things in there. Um, I did hear, uh, they did a presentation at MSBA that I went to and a couple of students talked about, um, Bruce, they talked specifically about their ability to, they were in one academy and how they were taking classes and had opportunities of, uh, in different academies. Just so it was, they were, they were flexible and they, so maybe they, they figured that out over the course of time that they need to have that flexibility, but, okay? So again, the reason I'm bringing this back is because I, I do think that, that by engaging our community, by engaging our staff, by engaging our students to understand what are the key things that, that we want all of our students to possess? And we want our educators to link in, to make relevant as they're working on whatever it is that they're working on. Kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. There's just a lot out there. Um, but this is, these are some examples for you to, to be clicking in. You can walk through, um, you can look at. Um, and I'll bring this back again and we'll talk more about it. But I just wanted to provide you with some more resources. And um, and, and probably one of our next meetings, I'll be sharing with you what this could look like for us and how we can, how we could start building collaborative people at the table. And Bruce, that might be how we access some of the people. We find out what do you want from our school? What would you need to be able to say? Right, maybe that's, maybe that's a platform. I don't know. Okay?
I don't know what they're going to do about it.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, um, that's what I have for that unless there's any other questions. I would turn it over to you.
Okay. I have a question. So Eden Valley, Kimball, um, Suck Center, Melrose, Belgrade.
Mm-hmm.
Um, most of those schools are probably a couple thousand kids.
Mm-hmm.
We're nine hundred. So are they handling it, this kind of idea kind of the same way? Cause you have strategic plans and now we have this of our student, all that. Not that I don't think we need to be leaders, just curious.
Um, so uh, B B E has bold, boundless, they have, yes. Uh, do, is theirs posted in the same way? I haven't seen, I didn't. But they have, they have their taglines and it again becomes, these are the things that we are focusing on for our learners in addition to content mastery. It's the skills that you need. And I think part of where that comes from is engaging like our, um, our, so I think of like Logan Lewis, my neighbor. Logan, what do you need your workers to have? What are the things? I don't, I can teach them the technical skills, but if they can't be a critical thinker. I don't, I can teach them the technical skills, but if they can't be a critical thinker, I, I, I can't teach, you know, I, I don't have time to develop that. If they can't be a problem solver, I don't, right? So what are the things that make them really solid employees? Because the content mastery is, that's focus number one, but then the other pieces are the whole child. But doing it in a very. A, a very decisive way, we're, we're saying we prioritize these things. I would guess when I think about some of the things that we've seen come through the high school. Digital citizenship is something that I'm pretty sure that our, would come out as a pretty high priority. What do we, how do our kids, how are they responsible with the technology that they have? We put this in, in the hands of littles, how are we teaching them to be responsible? And how are we demonstrating this is what it looks like? Anyways, I go, I can, just some things to think about.
Okay, this is your time, if anyone has any specific questions or comments that they wanna make before we conclude.
I had questions from a couple, several community members actually. Wondering why we don't have a trainer at our events that are physical?
Are we still engaging the trainer program that we had before?
They had not been able to provide us with a trainer, we are not required to have one outside of certain activities. Rick and I have been in communication about how we can look at that. Trainers are very hard, they're, they're hard to come by right now, which is why they haven't been. Gratefully, we've had a lot of community members who are either EMTs that are first responders, that are nurses, that are whatever, that have been able to step in. In various capacities, but it's been a shortage of staff, has been though.
Have we communicated with those people, the nurses, EMTs, whatever, about what their liability is?
You know, I, I have not explored what the specific are for those, I have not, but I, I'm not sure if Rick has or, but I can look into that.
I, I just know we're, we're having parents and grandparents and whatever come down when there's an injury, they're, they're willing because they're trained. But at the same time, maybe we should have, many schools have, not most, not all. Many schools have trainers at the more physical events.
Yeah.
But a liability problem, would it be in the school or would it be the trainer or, or the EMT or nurse or whatever? Where would the liability lie?
Sure.
They've been mostly, when we've had the EMTs and someone from the fire department, it's, we hire them through the. Through the fire department or through the ambulance service. Yeah, when we have tried getting trainers out of Alexandria and rumor, it's just. They don't have them, I, I, we tried borrowing one from, from BBE last year for an event and they, we couldn't get them here. But I think if we get the ball rolling early enough now, hopefully we can get somebody lined up for.
Okay. You, you've spoken to like Centra Care and the fire department and.
Yeah, we've.
Local fire departments.
Yeah.
And it just doesn't work.
Well, we've been able to.
It depends on the event.
Yeah, we get some trainers here, but it's hard to get someone, it's hard to get a trainer. It's a lot of nights for somebody who's, you know, coming from Alexandria or, you know, in a different area and. It's, it's really difficult to get them to be consistent and.
Good.
That's your only question or?
Yeah, that was a community.
Anyone else?
Several community members that actually spoke to me.
I, I do have a weird question, explain me the difference between the trainer and. The EMT type of people, that kinda stuff.
So a trainer is gonna be more focused on sports medicine and the activity. And the, the activity at hand, so how an injury. It's, it's gonna be more around the specific, maybe an ankle strain or that is as a result of basketball, for example. An EMT, they're gonna have a different type of training, that's going to be more accidents, crisis type.
If somebody's hurt and the EMT comes, we drag them over to the hospital, are they getting that same service there?
Once they get to the hospital, it's, it's a whole different, it's, then it's, then it's a doctor and a nurse, whereas a, a trainer. So when you have a trainer on staff, if you have, like if we had a district trainer, they would work preventatively with students?
We were just, I thought we were talking about events.
At events.
So I wanna stay on the events, I understand if we had somebody here.
No, but that's the same, so, so the trainers know the way that a student athlete is preparing, they walk through and they might, they'll see an injury. At a, let's say it's a hockey game, okay? And they might have a, a student that they know hockey has a, is prone to an injury.
I gotcha, yeah.
Then they're going to tape it or they're going to, they'll do something preventively, they'll do something proactively, they might treat it differently. Knowing the student athlete and the students and how.
So that's exactly my question.
Yeah.
So you're talking about events, I thought. And so you have somebody here for the period of the event, you're talking about after the event.
What I'm, no, what I'm telling you is that a trainer, a trainer, the purpose of their training is to look at the student athlete from practice to competition. And they'll triage and deal with an injury that takes place at the event, okay? But they have, their knowledge base is, is of this, of.
I, I, I understand that.
An EMT is gonna come down and they're gonna look at that at the moment.
I thought you were talking, I thought it was the question, a trainer at the events.
Yes, but you asked me what's the difference between a trainer and a trainer.
I'm asking, what's the, what's the.
And an EMT, what's the difference?
Purpose of a trainer at the event?
They do the, they can, they are.
Cause there're not gonna be any of the previous stuff that we just, you just talked about.
Right, but they can triage, they can do the same thing that an EMT can do. But they have a, bring a different knowledge to the treatment. An EMT, when they, when they look at, they're gonna look at it and they're gonna say, well, it's not broken. They're gonna check for vitals, they're gonna check all the crisis work, but they're not gonna probably wrap it and approve the kid to go back out and play again. A trainer might do that, a trainer might look at it and say, I can wrap it, here, this is, this is, yep, you're, you're okay to re, to play again. An EMT, that's not the, that's not the knowledge they're bringing to that, they're bringing it and saying, is this, what are the vitals, is this person okay and so on. It's gonna depend on the person and what their knowledge is. A physician, a doctor that comes down and looks at it, they might say, you're okay to just wrap it and it's gonna depend on the person.
When we had a trainer a couple of years ago, part of their deal was that a couple of days a week, they would come and practice, be around after school. To tape ankles and, you know, if a student had an, an eating issue, but then they were also at the event.
That makes sense to me.
As a first layer of triage.
I was just trying, I guess my question was distinguishing that in an event. I'm not, I'm not sure at the event. Is it when somebody falls and maybe got a concussion and the coach puts them right back in to wrestle the next, next match? Is that where that person is supposed to come in and say, hey, that kid's gotta stay out? I'm just grasping.
Yeah. The coaches are trained too.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, they had a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, for concussions, yeah.
But the difference, sorry, is, is when our kids got hurt, the first thing the coach said is, take them to sports medicine. As opposed to the doctor, cause there's a whole different field of knowledge that your local doctor doesn't have. In the long, in the, that's in long term. Anybody else? Are we, are you sure?
All right.
We're done.
Thank you, thank you.